We have a lot on our plate tonight. We have three public hearings and two meetings. So we will get started with the first public hearing, and that's for Urbana Cunningham Township. It's to approve a proposed property tax increase for the town of Cunningham for 2019. And the corporate and special purpose property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $1,184,454.38. The proposed corporate and special service property taxes to be levied for 2019 are $1,71733.56. This represents a 24.3% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases for 2018 were zero. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2019 are zero. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. Total property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $1,184,454.38. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2019 are $1,471,733.56. This represents a 24.3% increase over the previous year. So I would like to call this meeting to order, this hearing to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Woo.
Here.
Does anyone wish to speak to the Cunningham Town Board on the topic of the property tax levy? Seeing no one, I will adjourn this hearing. So next up is the meeting of the Cunningham Town Board for Monday, December 9th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
And Woo.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting from November 4th, 2019, and a special meeting on November 18th, 2019. Is there a motion? So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? Next up is committee to verify bills, and I believe Township Assessor Wayne Williams is sitting in for Supervisor Chinowith. Okay. Wayne?
So I believe Danielle emailed you out the bills. Just, do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Wayne? Is there a move to accept the town fund, general assistance fund bills?
I'll make that motion.
Could you give the amounts, please?
You what?
Second. It's the amounts.
The amounts.
Oh, move for, to accept the town fund in the amount of $133,000 and $133,046.29, and the general assistance fund for $56,477.67. Be approved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Reports of officers.
So Danielle emailed a supervisor's memo, so if it's okay, I'll just go into my report. If that's okay. All right. So, to date, we, my office has gone out and measured 904 parcels. That's about 11% of the 8,242,000 residential parcels that I hope to tackle in the next year. We are working very hard. We also have appeals, and we're still dealing with hearings, so we'll be doing that through the end of the calendar year. Also, just want to remind anyone that if anyone has any questions about their assessment, please call my office. Number is (217) 367-7059, or you can come to the office at 205 West Green, and myself or someone on my staff is more than happy to talk to any taxpayer about their assessment.
Wayne, could you say your number again? I'm sorry.
The phone number?
Uh huh.
(217) 367-7059.
And Wayne?
Dennis.
Yeah. Do you want to update anything about the comment that I sent to you this afternoon? Did you see that?
I did, and no.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Unfinished business is none. Under new business, we have several items. The first is an audit presentation from Clifton Larson Allen. Hope Wheeler.
Hello, thanks for having me here tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2019 audit. My name is Hope Wheeler. I'm a principal here in the Champagne office of Clifton Larson Allen. I think you all received, actually, someone is going to have the presentation up. I'm not sure. If not, I'll just kind of go over it. You should have in your packets the audited financial statements, the governance communication letter, and the management letter. Those are the three reports that we issued as a result of the audit process. In the governance communication letter, just to hit some highlights of that, that's a required communication from our firm to you as a governing board to explain how it went, our work with management on this audit process. Overall, I wanted to share there were no significant new accounting policies in this year's financial statements. There were no significant estimates in your financial statements. You're on a modified cash basis of accounting. There are no difficulties in working with management or disagreements on accounting or auditing or reporting matters. There are also, if we have adjustments, they are attached to that governance communication, and there were no uncorrected misstatements. There are a few journal entries attached to that letter, but none of them were material or significant. Just to go over some highlights of the year-end, fiscal year-end, the June 30, 19 financial statements. We did give an unmodified or clean opinion, we had no modifications to our opinion, on the modified cash basis of accounting. Your total assets at the end of the fiscal year were $2.9 million. Your net position was also that $2.9 million made up of an investment in capital assets of approximately $66,000, restricted net position of $1.7 million, and unrestricted of $1.2 million. The statement of activities or your change for the year, your revenue and expenses. You had a change in net position of a decrease of $606,000 for the fiscal year, so expenses over revenues. For the town fund, the main general fund, the net expense over revenue was $222,000. And for the general assistance fund, your net expense over revenue was $393,000. And I'm sure you'll recall you budgeted deficit spending, and the expenditures in each of your departments were within the budgeted numbers. The deficit is larger than expected because of property taxes coming in late after the end of the fiscal year. And since we're on the cash basis of accounting, they're recorded when they come in. I had a slide that showed revenues in total compared to the two prior fiscal years. That I'll just explain. For 2017, you were at $1.1 million in total revenues. 2018, also $1.1 million. And then for fiscal year 19, the revenues were $903,000. That decrease, obviously with your main revenue source being property taxes, that decrease is all related to the delay in the property tax receipt. Expenses-wise compared to the prior two years, fiscal year 17 totaled $833,000, fiscal year 18, $1.2 million, and then fiscal year 19, $1.5 million. I have this broken down into supervisor's office, assessor's office, and grants. Then obviously, the big, really, the big swing was in your social services and your, the expenditures that were made and planned in that fund. So that increased. In 2017, those expenses were $190,000. 2018, $449,000. And then in 2019, $811,000. Net position-wise, just showing your, your 2017 and 2018 net position stayed flat, and then that decreased in 2019, as expected, to try to follow the new state law of not having too much of a reserve in your fund balance. So that net position did decrease in 2019, as I explained earlier. Lastly, just wanted to touch on, we issued a management letter, and that's the letter with any recommendations we wanted to share with management and governing board. There were three items in that letter. One of them, if you've been on the board in the past, you've seen in the past, related to really just informing you that we do prepare the financial statements as part of the audit process. We can't be considered part of your internal control system, but the audit report was reviewed by Danielle and approved. The second item related to journal entries, there was an improvement made in this year. Last year, we reported journal entries are an area we always recommended. Those are manual adjustments, so it's not cash-in, cash-out necessarily. So it always creates potentially a risk that a manual adjustment could be made without proper support. So we always recommend a second set of eyes on that, or a review process, and that be documented. Progress was made on that during the year, and entries made by staff are reviewed and documented by Danielle. And so now, we just recommended that the entries made by Danielle be reviewed, and that review be documented. I think she suggested having Wayne review those in the future with the supporting documentation. Then the last item in that letter was in regards to the reconciliation process. And we noted during this fiscal year, there were some instances where the bank reconciliations weren't completed on a timely manner, and the reconciling items not cleared off on a timely manner. I think in discussion with Danielle, that was, I think, related to some timing and some staffing issues. And so she's aware of that, and is putting a process in place to make sure things stay up to date on a timely basis. Then in addition, there was a new count related this year, related to credit cards, and that wasn't, didn't have a reconciliation being completed. So she is working, and maybe has already implemented a process to make sure that's reconciled on a monthly basis also.
She has.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions from, based on my presentation, or the reports that they've seen previously?
Bill?
Yeah, I remember the property taxes were paid late, and it's also noted in Danielle's memo for tonight. Is it actually, is there anything about it in the audit report as far as the timing of the tax payments?
I don't think so. Not that I recall, because you are on the modified cash basis of accounting. We don't typically go into the detailed timing.
I was just thinking, if somebody looked at this five years from now, and it showed $500,000 deficit, and low income, that it would help to have a note in there about the property tax timing. I guess I would have thought it might have been a note.
I think it's in the management letter.
Is it in there?
And then Danielle, Danielle sent a supervisor's memo, and that is.
Yeah, it's in the memo, but it's not part of the audit report. It's my question.
Yeah, I don't.
Don't see it.
I don't recall it being.
I didn't see it. I don't know.
Yeah.
I think that was my only question. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I'm curious. So you talked about two items that need to be reconciled, the bank statements and also the credit card statements. Do you know, and perhaps this is a question for Wayne, do you know if the person who is not making the charges is, sorry, the person who is making the charges is not the reconciler?
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
Sure. I'm curious if the people who are making the charges are not the reconciler for both the bank statements and the credit card statements?
So there's been, there's been a change in our process because of the audit, and the person that is going to be reconciling the credit card statements, is my understanding that that person does not have the authority to use the credit card. But it's one of Danielle's employees, so I can't say for certain.
I assume that that's kind of good practice, in terms of.
I will, and I can't necessarily answer that specifically. I will say, we reviewed the policies that were put in place over the credit card usage, and they were very good. Very good, very detailed. I was very impressed with the level of detail they went into. But then it was just, the policy, you know, Danielle had concern about credit cards and the usage. Then it was just really on the back end of doing the reconciliation. So there are good policies in place. I can't answer whether the person that, because I think they check out the credit card anytime they need to use it.
We check out the credit card, so I use the credit card, but I also help with reconciliations if needed. So.
But then there's always a second set of eyes on that, so I understand your question. So is Wayne making charges and then also doing the reconciliation?
Correct. I can touch base with Danielle as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Eric?
I think this is probably not a question for you. Maybe it's a marker for future discussion, or maybe somebody just has to remind me of what happened. But I was a little bit startled at the $811,000 in this past year for social service funding. Where did, where did that come from? How did, we must have approved that, but when did that happen?
You guys get the bills every month.
Well, but the statement here was that this was, oh, so this was general assistance. This wasn't in programs?
You know, I can speak to the assessor's budget.
It's general assistance. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the general assistance fund, I'm sorry, had $705,000 in social service expenses. And town fund was only $177 of that number.
Okay, it's fine. I had a semantic glitch. When social service was mentioned, I was thinking of the programs that we fund.
Okay.
Mary Alice? You have a question?
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Wayne?
Not a question, but I would just like to add that in previous years, there was a finding for not, for the lack of proper tracking of vacation and sick time. That is not a finding this year.
That is correct. Any other questions? Okay. So there's no action. Charlie?
Actually, I think a motion to accept the audit, right?
Motion to accept.
That's what we usually do.
I move that we accept the audit report.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number T 2019-12-003, an ordinance levying taxes for all town purposes for the town of Cunningham, Champagne County, Illinois, for the tax year 2019, collectible in 2020. Wayne?
In this ordinance, we're asking that you pass an ordinance levy $761,000 for the town fund, $626,631 for the general assistance fund.
I'll make a motion to accept that ordinance, or approve that ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Questions? Mary Alice?
So I'm assuming this is related to the notice of the public hearing, that we were just, we just had the public hearing. So I'd like to understand the public hearing document in which we say that it represents a 31% increase over the previous year.
So.
Sorry, that's city council. My bad. 24.3%.
So what we do is, so it's important to understand that Cunningham Township is a non-home rule unit of government, so we're subject to the tax caps laid out in the property taxes extension limitation law, which we're actually limited to increase our levy by inflation, or 5%, whichever is less. This year is going to be less. However, you're allowed to recoup the full amount of any new property that may come on. And I gave Danielle the calculations for what I think is going to be new construction. However, there is a chance that there is significant new value added if we win the Carl and OSF case. Therefore, we need to levy enough to be able to recoup the full value.
So if I can summarize, it sounds to me like there's three levers here. The first one is the property tax cap, which is 5% or less inflation. Then there is whatever new building there is potential. And then there is the hospital properties coming back on the rolls.
Yeah.
Those three levers, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if, so we have an amount of 1.5, I'm just going to round up, 1.5 million. We collected last time, 1.2 million, so it's about $300,000 increase. So basically, it sounds to me like if two of those levers, because they're variable, right? So the hospital property tax, as well as the, what type of new buildings we have. If those don't come through, then it's just going, the increase is only going to be that inflation.
Right, roughly.
Roughly. But we're putting the 24.3 in case there is significant building, and we also get the hospital. So 24.3 is kind of a misnomer. We're not actually raising taxes. This is why I'm trying to get through. I don't want the public to think that we're raising taxes by 25%.
Correct.
So we are not raising taxes on existing people other than the inflation.
Correct.
And it's a good point to bring up. We also published that very explanation in the newspaper when the notices about these hearings were published, so it explains that. I can go into that more detail. Bill?
So in the audit report, it mentioned that there was $69,000 in abatements. I assume that's mostly enterprise zone, is it, or all enterprise zone abatements, do you know?
I don't.
I guess I should have asked that before she left. But how do those calculate into the tax levy? Do those come out as part of our levy, and then they get subtracted out later before we get the money?
Yes. Yes, it does.
That's quite a bit. That's about 5% of our levy. Okay, thanks.
Sharice?
Okay, this is my first time going through any of this, so I'm really confused. I need to understand the meaning of property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases. Where it says, "The property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases for 2018 were zero. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2019 are zero." So I want to understand the significance of.
Are you looking at the public notice?
I'm looking at the public notice, yeah. Sweet. I don't. It's a 1, 2, and 3, fourth paragraph down.
So we don't have debt, so we don't have to levy specifically for debt, and we don't have any building leases. So we don't have to levy specifically for that. However, if we did have debt, and we did have these leases, we could levy specifically for those purposes. We don't.
Okay. So we're not levying property taxes to pay for a debt that we owe on any leases or, or.
Money.
Or service.
Right.
Okay. I just needed to understand that significance. I've never done this before, so. It's a learning experience. Teaching moment.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is resolution number T 2019-12-020R, resolution authorizing Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated for insurance broker services.
So on this resolution, there needs to be one change made. Okay, I'm sorry, no, I'm referring to another resolution. This resolution, we're signing, we need to sign a new agreement with a new insurance broker. We're moving away from our last insurance broker. There were just service issues, and we feel that we can get a better level of service from Gallagher. They have an office here locally, and the agent has been very responsive so far. So we ask that you approve this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I could do that. I can make approval of resolution number T 2019-12-020R, a resolution authorizing the Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated for insurance broker services.
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Discussion? Mary Alice, and then Sharice.
So it's probably in this very long contract, but could you summarize the cost to township in terms of employing this service?
So typically, when you hire an insurance broker, you don't, they don't charge you a fee. The way they are compensated is by the insurance company.
So are insurance rates going to be higher, lower, or about the same?
It'd be the same. It's just like, think about like State Farm, right? Whether you go to this State Farm agent or that State Farm agent. The State Farm agent gets paid based on the premiums you pay to State Farm, but the price isn't going to be any different.
Okay. Sharice?
I guess the question that I have is, whereas the supervisor has determined providing the Blue Cross Blue Shield options.
That's a different resolution?
That's the next resolution.
Oh, I just saw Gallagher, so I had the top. I saw Gallagher. I thought that's what it was. So yeah, to sign a business associate agreement with Gallagher Benefits. T 2019-12-020R?
Oh, you're R. You're right. My apologies.
Okay. And it says in the resolution that you'd be signing with Blue Cross Blue Shield, correct?
Right. So Blue Cross, you can't just go to any insurance agent. You have to go to insurance agents that they are, that are part of their network of insurance agents?
Well, that's what I was going to question, because I know that Carl doesn't accept Blue Cross Blue Shield anymore, does it? And neither does OSF, as far as I know.
So Carl Clinic in Champagne County does not accept Blue Cross Blue Shield. Carl Clinic outside of Champagne County does accept Blue Cross Blue Shield.
But you work in Champagne County?
Oh, I do. I go to Christie.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, there are plenty, I'm sure there are plenty of employees, though, that their records are Carl or OSF, and that.
That's actually not the case. We have Blue Cross right now.
Okay.
And so we'll be staying with Blue Cross probably for next year. So none of our, I'm not saying it's been absolutely painless, but all of our employees, as of now, is my understanding, are using providers in the network.
Okay, so they're using Blue Cross Blue Shield, though, right?
Right. Currently.
Do they have a choice to use anybody else if? I just know that some hospitals, mainly Carl and OSF, had dropped, at least they had, a couple of years ago, had dropped using Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's why I was wondering. I just went, you know, I'm just thinking about how.
So I'm also really hard, really trying hard to not violate any HIPAA laws?
Yeah.
Regarding specific employees. We have eight employees. Currently, we use, we have Blue Cross insurance provided through Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay.
And.
And they're doing okay?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Without violating any HIPAA.
Well, I don't want you to give me names or medical conditions, so you don't have to, that wouldn't be violating HIPAA. Just, I'm just trying to get a general idea of who, what hospitals will be providing services, simply because. what hospitals will be providing services, be simple, simply because, um, my previous, previous experience, at least with Carl and OSF, was that they, they stopped accepting Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, but...
Okay. Eric?
So, who are the local providers who, who are available under Blue Cross Blue Shield?
So, I can show you how to navigate to Blue Cross's website, and you can pull it up. I, I only know who I go to, so I, I...
And you go to Christie.
Past that, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
So, Christie Clinic, for example, would be one example?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's not the same across the board. For example, Carl does not have a contract, um, through Health Alliance, which is the insurance company they operate. If you're getting your insurance through the state medical plan, such as state retirees might, yet they do with, um, other programs. So, one person may be able to have, uh, Blue Cross or Health Alliance or whatever it is. Well, someone else living next door might not be able to because it depends upon the source of the medical insurance. Now, I'm not saying that makes sense, but I just happen to have checked on that within the last month, and that's the information I got from the state.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
No, I'm, I'm...
I saw a hand up down here.
I, I, I would say I'm, well, I'm satisfied with you guys' response. I'm bewildered by the healthcare system.
Mm-hmm.
Charlie?
I, I've been informed that Carl does accept Blue Cross Blue Shield at this point.
I just want to make sure that people are covered. It's the main reason.
Well, and there's a difference between Carl Hospital and Carl Clinic.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really? Well, I think that this whole discussion is a perfect example of why we need single payer healthcare.
Okay, that's another policy issue that's not up for discussion tonight. Thank you. Um, will the clerk, let's see, do we need a roll call on this?
Uh, there should be a roll call on the resolution.
Okay.
Thanks, though.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hursey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is Resolution Number T 2019-12-021R. Resolution authorizing
Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance coverage effective January 1st, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That was Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Seconded by Eric?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion.
I think we can add it.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hursey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next is Resolution Number T 2019-12-022R. A resolution authorizing the Cunningham Township Supervisor to sign a contract for flexible spending account for health insurance coverage with key benefit administrators. Is there a motion?
Young Dean will make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice.
I never had hair like that, but thank you.
Any discussion?
I did.
Mary Alice.
So, tell me if I'm reading this correctly. So, it costs us $5.25 per eight, like, times eight, is that right, to have this company manage our flexible spending accounts?
You're not reading it.
I am not reading it correctly. Okay, well, that's fine. That's why I wanted to ask.
No, no, no. So, there, there's a minimum monthly fee, which is $55. So, because we don't, because it's only eight, that could potentially sign up, and that's not to say that everyone will. We would pay the minimum monthly fee of $55 a month.
So, this is 50. And I, I guess I, so I understand that there's, I mean, the U of I has the same thing, right? We have to, we have to submit a certain minimum amount, otherwise we can't participate in the plan. I, I get that. I guess, the bottom line is, I'm trying to figure out, does this contract obligate Township to pay for this service? Or, and that's why I don't understand, the monthly administrative service is 5.25 per participant. That's why I'm trying to understand that number.
So, I can tell you with absolute certainty that at least one Township employee will take advantage of this if offered, so we'll have to pay at least $50 a month. And knowing that we don't have enough employees to go more than 50, we'll be paying at least $50 a month.
So, this is not, I, I'm just, as I said, I'm sorry, I'm familiar with how the U of I does it. So, as an employee, I pay for the flexible benefits. My employer does not pay.
Oh, I see. So, the...
Does that make sense?
The employer would pay. The employer, Cunningham Township would pay the, the minimum monthly administration fee.
The administrative fee, right.
Yes. However, so you know, the way it works is, money comes out of our paychecks.
Right. So, you're saying it's a minimum of $50 regardless of how many people are on it, but then it's also 5.25 per participant if you go over the 50 bucks?
Right.
That's what it sounds to me like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bill?
Just to remind me, is this, is there a township match to their contributions, or this is all just individual contribution?
Not at the time.
Okay.
And also...
Hopefully, this person is saving more than $600 a year by doing this and saving money on his taxes. Otherwise, we're coming up behind because we're going to pay $600 a year for the service.
Yes, or her.
Okay.
Um, also, there is a 50 cent, um, per employee fee that's not included in the minimum for the, for the, uh, direct deposit.
Any other questions? Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hursey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the township agenda is approving the 2020 Town Board meeting schedule.
This is including the, uh, the time and date change?
Oh, um...
Did you want to summarize?
Wait, wait, wait. Actually, we need to, I don't know how this works, but that last resolution?
That we just passed?
Yes.
Something that needs to be amended, isn't there?
There's something that needs to be amended. So, not 21, not 20, so it's probably 22. Not 20. Give me a moment. 21. So, in the last one, for the flexible spending, that one has a typo. It needs to say, authorizes the Township Supervisor, not the Township.
So, can we make an amendment to, to that?
That's a typo.
It's a typo?
We need an amendment.
No, we just need to recognize that, that there's a typo in there to fix. Is that sufficient, Fred?
Uh, yes, everybody's agreeable. I think that's sufficient.
Agreeable.
Yep.
Agreeable.
It's agreeable.
Agreeable.
Duly noted.
Where is it? Actually, actually.
I just will move.
It's, it's now therefore being resolved. It's the second line. It's right below the resolve.
It's the second, whereas.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll make that correction with the final...
I thought it was the, no, I think it's the last.
Authorizes the Township Supervisor underneath the resolve, right here.
Oh, my bad.
Underneath the resolve.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right.
Not the second, yeah, right.
Right. Okay, we'll make that correction. All right, Township Board meeting schedule. Charlie, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I, attached to the, to Danielle's memo is a potential schedule that reflects the Township meeting on the second Monday of the month at 6:30 PM.
Okay.
Except for, uh, and, and Township is not affected by any Monday city, uh, city or state holidays.
So, the, the significant change is the switch to the 6:30 PM start time and move it to the second Monday of the month. And is, do we need a motion?
Yeah, a motion, just to do those...
What are, what are people actually approving? The list of dates on the...
The Township meeting dates on the, on the attached...
The calendar.
Yeah, yeah, just move to, you know, move to, to meet on the second Mondays at 6:30.
Okay.
I'll move that, uh, we changed the Township meeting dates to the second Monday of the month at 6:30 PM for, uh, the 2020 calendar year.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Eric.
And also the time, right?
Yeah.
I said 6:30.
You did, okay. Thank you. I didn't question.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? Or, Mary Alice? Discussion?
Okay, I'm, I'm only going to vote for this if Charlie texts everybody on the Monday night that it starts at 6:30 because, um, it's hard to keep track of.
Well, you know, there is something, um, I believe there's an Outlook calendar associated with all you are doing Outlook via the city sort of thing. I think we can put in, I'll talk to IT, but we may be able to put in a, a, a meeting date for every, for every Monday or Tuesday with its, with appropriate start time, and, uh, you want a 30-minute warning on any meetings?
Make it the morning.
I'm going to volunteer the clerk for the group text.
That's right.
We'll, we'll figure something out, yes. We'll figure something out.
Thank you.
It sounds very clerk-y obligation. We'll figure something out.
All right. Um, can we do a voice, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. With no further business before the Cunningham Town Board, this meeting is adjourned. first is a notice of a continued public hearing. Um, this hearing is continued from September 23rd, 2019, to tonight, December 9th. We will receive public input on a proposed annexation agreement between the City of Urbana and Henri Mercollo. The proposed annexation agreement is for a tract of land consisting of approximately 1.01 acres and generally located east of North Smith Road and north of University Avenue. The property is commonly referred to as 2218 East University Avenue and has a permanent index number of 302110351016. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hursey?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Does anyone wish to address the City Council on the topic of the annexation agreement between the City and the Mercollos? Seeing none, I will adjourn this public hearing.
Mayor, uh, I think it's to be continued to, uh, April of next year. If I, as I understand correctly, that was the intention I heard from public, from, uh, CD, to April, I believe, April 10.
So, this will come before the board?
To continue, yeah, we want to continue this to, 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 I think it's April 10. Or was it June 10? Do you remember, Kurt, when the, uh, public hearing is supposed to continue to?
I don't have anything in the script for continuation of the hearing. And there's no one here from CD?
I, I believe it's supposed to be continued to April 10.
Do you need a motion for that?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
I agree. Uh, someone can make a motion and, uh, you can take a voice vote on it.
Okay. Can we have a motion to continue this until April 10?
I move that we continue the annexation, uh, agreement between the City of Urbana and Henri Mercollo, uh, regarding the tract of land consisting of approximately 1.01 acres and generally located east of Nor, of North Smith Road and north of University Avenue. The property commonly known as, do I say what it is? Index number, um, is 2218 East University Avenue. I move that we continue it to April 9th, 10th?
10th. This is continuing the hearing, okay?
Yes, continuing the hearing to April, uh, 10th, 2020.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that extremely comprehensive motion.
All those in, uh, does it require a roll call vote?
No. Voice vote.
Nope, voice vote. All those in favor?
Oh, okay, so, it should be April. Let's see, we just pulled out the calendar. We're trying to figure out which week it is. April 23rd, I think. That's what the Plan Commission said. I know, that's for the...
April 13th or June.
That's the Plan Commission meeting.
Amending my motion and move...
Amending, amending the motion to...
And if you just hold on a second, I'll go find the notes in my office from, from, uh...
Okay.
Just give me a second to bring up the right date.
The, the plan case was continued to April 23rd.
So, it must be June or May 11th. There's a May 11th meeting.
Okay, oh, yes, should be continued to May 4, 2020.
May.
May 4, 2020. That's the correct date.
Would you like to revise your amend, your, uh, motion?
I would like to amend my motion then to, I move to, can I leave everything else and just change the date?
Continue it.
Okay, continue this hearing, public hearing to May 4th, 2020.
I'll second.
Well, it was seconded by Eric before.
And I agree with the amendment.
Okay. So, moved and seconded. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Okay, this hearing has been continued to May 4th, 2020, and with no further business before this hearing, it is adjourned. Okay. Next hearing is public hearing, um, to approve a proposed property tax increase. Any person desiring to appear before the hearing should be present tonight. The corporate and special purpose property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $7,876,330. The proposed corporate and special service property taxes to be levied for 2019 are $10,325,152. This represents a 31.1% increase over the previous year. Property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases for 2018 were zero. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2019 are zero. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. Total property taxes extended or abated for 2018 were $7,876,330. Estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2019 are $10,325,152. Represents a 31% increase over the previous year. And I will add, as stated in the notice in the newspaper, the 31% increase is based on the possibility that hospital properties could be considered taxable for the 2019 tax levy. The City intends to reduce the tax levy, so current tax rates remain the same. So, for an owner of $150,000, owner of... increase is based on the possibility that hospital properties could be considered taxable for the 2019 tax levy. The City intends to reduce the tax levy, so current tax rates remain the same. So for an owner of a $150,000 owner occupied home, that would mean a City property tax bill of $594, the same as 2018, assuming that the value of the property doesn't change. Urbana homeowners should not see any increase in their property tax bill for the City portion of the taxes unless their property taxes or property assessment has increased. Our share, the City's share of the total property tax bill is about 13%. So will the clerk please, I'll call this to order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Does anyone wish to address the City Council on the issue of the property tax levy? Seeing no one, this hearing is adjourned. And I'll turn this meeting over to Chairman Miller to run the committee meeting.
Well, I guess we're.
There's a statement first.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, before we get started, I'd just simply like to recognize Kay, one of the two great staff members that I have. Many of you know that November and December are usually very busy months. We've had, we have lots of end of the year things, you know, all the i's have to be dotted, t's crossed, you've seen a lot of it tonight. Adding to that, we had some crazy things happen in October. I got caught by a typhoon and held up. Kay gave up going to training. I'm very, very grateful for that, and so I want to recognize the hard work that she's done. And then she turned around and filled in for Wendy and for Kate while they were out representing the City on other things. So Kay's done a tremendous job the last three months holding up the office.
Now, I think that Kay should come forward so that the City can record this event.
She, you know, she likes to be the person behind the curtains.
All right, okay, no embarrassments.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're now going to start the City Council Committee, the whole meeting. And we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. This would be for November 25th, 2019, and the special meeting that was held on December 2nd, 2019. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Or any corrections?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor of approving them, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, the minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we have one presentation from Sister Cities Committee.
All right, let's see, I'll open up this, just by comment that the Sister City program did travel to France in November. We were invited by the City and Mayor Cooney, Pierre Cooney, to attend because he was very interested in continuing our Sister City relationship, but also it was very important for them to have the presence of representatives from America during the celebration. It was the 75th year anniversary of the dates of their liberation from Axis occupation, Nazi in Germany, occupation of their city during World War II, when the arrival of the American Army, 3rd Army under George S. Patton arrived and basically liberated several different cities and towns along the Moselle River. They consider that something that the entire, actually the nation of France celebrates very seriously. And so we were invited to attend, and several people of us, we had six people who attended. We went willingly, we covered our expenses, and we experienced the friendship of the people of Tournville. So we're going to have a slideshow here, which we're going to open up, and it's going to be this one. This is also a PDF file, so I'll do this. All right, and then I can, I think I can do it this way, right? Okay, very good. So this is just saying that we went between November 15th and 17th this year, next. And we've been to Tournville before, we went in 2014, and we're revisiting the city. This is a picture of the City Hall. So that you know where we are, Tournville is in the northeast corner of France. It's 12 kilometers south of the Luxembourg nation border, and about 24 kilometers to 29 kilometers south of the City of Luxembourg. And when we went in 2014, we signed a charter with the current mayor of that time, Anne Gromaire. And we brought with us Mr. Kermit Harden, who was a World War II vet. So we received the invitation from the mayor and were pleased to agree to go. The first thing we did as a group was we had an informal lunch gathering at Le Somier Restaurant. Very excellent meal was provided, and we found that we could become friends with them very easily. That was followed pretty closely by our reception, an official reception in their City Hall building. A large group of the councilors and the mayor and the deputy mayors were there to greet us, and we were making friends right and left. One of the first things that we saw after the official statements of greeting were over, and by the way, at that time, certain gifts were given to us by the mayor to deliver to our mayor, and this, I'm going to show you what they are. Whatever's inside. And we have some other things here, which I'll show you in a minute.
I'm going to interrupt for just one second.
Go ahead, please do.
I wanted to say that this is a picture of the inside room called the Urbana Salon. They have a room in their City Council, in their City Hall, I'm sorry, which has these two items plus a couch. It's actually a really large room, and the title of the room is right outside, and it says Urbana Salon.
And this happens to be right outside the mayor's office on that floor, the first floor, they call it. So then we were invited to take a walking tour. A historian from the community was guiding us, and so we traveled through, a walking tour through the downtown area.
And I want to add one more thing.
Go ahead, do.
We had some great deputy mayors who assisted us. There's 12 deputy mayors in Tournville, and they.
And several councilors, quite a few, actually.
A lot of councilors. The other thing they did was they actually put up these American flags on their City Hall just for us. They also had American flags on the bridge between France and American flags, which I don't think we have a picture of that, but I did want to point out that they did do that for our arrival.
Right. The American flag and the French flag were seen together numerous times. So we toured the city. One of the most interesting structures is the Belfry, or we, I'd call it the clock tower, but it's called a belfry, and we also visited what is a museum. It's the Tour de Poussetes, the Fleet Tower, and it used to be the jail or the dungeons. But it's been, it's a very curious building inside. It's got about 14 different levels. You have to walk up and down quarter steps, half steps, half levels, and it's now a museum, quite an interesting museum, actually. And then right next to it was one of the original town gates. And then we walked, you know, through the city, and we went to the large church. Catholic church was near the river, which had just been renovated. They were very proud of that. One of the things that we noticed and was pointed out to us that they have renamed one of their city squares for the mayor Anne Gromaire, who passed away a year after their visit to the United States. They dearly loved her, and they remembered her by that. Do you want to talk about this?
Oh, well, this picture is for Bill, who asked us to look for bicycle infrastructure. So this is a boulevard. On either side of the boulevard are different directions of the traffic. So you'll notice that the parking is right off of the street, but then in between it are two big bike lanes. So the bicyclists are protected not only by the parked cars, but also by the trees there. I thought that was interesting.
Which side of the car do they drive on?
They drive on the same side that we do.
The right, yeah, as we do. So their steering wheels on the left side of the car, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, thanks, you know, I'm glad I could give you that mission, and thanks for the texts and Facebook messages during, while you were there. Showing me all the bicycle infrastructure, I appreciate that.
It was a fun challenge to find all of it.
So there were a lot of ceremonial moments on our trip, and one of them was a gathering at the Place de Liberté. We watched what was pretty much like a review of the troops, and I think that was mostly what happened there, and there was some music, and we sang the anthems of both America and France about three times.
Six. We sang it six times that day.
Okay. And they don't, they're not shy about singing theirs, and so we did our best. We were then bussed to a nearby town. It was about like, I don't know, 20 kilometers north along the river, where it happened that one of the battalions under George Patton actually crossed the river. The bridges were shot out and bombed in Tournville, but they did create a plank bridge eventually. But one of the battalions crossed at this town, which is called Malinge, and they had a ceremonial moments and wreath laying at their city memorial. Do you want to do this one?
We had an American football demonstration, in which they handed out rules for football. And this is not soccer, by the way, this is actually American football. They have club sports there that play American football. And it was interesting, the game lasted, I think, for 40 minutes, so a little bit shorter than ours here.
It was kind of a demonstration for our benefit. So as the evening progressed toward the, we were arriving now at the large celebration, which is going to be the signing of our charter, the renewal of our charter with the new mayor. Outside the bell tower, the band was playing music for the entire community outside.
And this was the Air Force, the United States Air Force band that was playing.
Okay.
Sorry.
No. So we walked up the stairs to the first floor, they call it the first floor, it's really the second floor, and to their large assembly room, where they often hold public City Council meetings. And the place was packed with visitors, and we were provided seats at the front, and I took a kind of a ceremonial role here.
This was also livestreamed on YouTube, the whole event. So this room was standing room only from not only official delegates from the City, but also community members, children attended. You'll see some pictures of children in a moment. This was only for the signing. All these people showed up just for the signing.
Just for signing the charter. And the livestream is on YouTube, and we'll be showing you a connection, a YouTube site that you can, a URL for that in a minute. But you can go there and actually watch this ceremony. It was recorded. Okay, great. So of course, it started out with Mayor Pierre Cooney making an address and commenting. And it was all translated by Marie-elle Icard for us, both the French and for us and the English for them. Then I had the opportunity to read a proclamation that was sent to me by Mayor Diane Wolf-Marlin. And we read that, and it was translated as we read. After that, there was a signing moment, and the lady that you see here in red is Elise Pouille. She was the individual who originally contacted us in Urbana in about 2012, exploring the possibility of creating a Sister City partnership. And it took us about two years, and a couple of people in our group who spoke French before we felt we could be comfortably saying yes, which was timely because then almost immediately we were invited to go to France to participate in the ceremonies back in 2014. So this is a picture of the document, which actually I have also brought with me. And afterwards, we were all invited up to have photo opportunities and have some nice pictures taken of the event.
So we have Kate here from the mayor's office. He's on the left-hand side from me. Hopefully, it's the left-hand side for everyone else. And then Wendy, who's standing next to me from the clerk's office.
That's right.
They also participated.
Yes. Well, then, let's see, what were they singing? This young choir sang, I think, was the American national anthem.
They sang the American national anthem, and then the French.
Yeah.
This is the sixth time we sing it that day, so it's the end, but it was very sweet, and they all had American flags and French flags with them.
Really nice. And then Mayor Cooney brought out gifts, which are to be presented to our mayor. She also gave a copy to both Mary Alice and I. This is a very thick and detailed
Yeah.
presentation or book with a beautiful binding on the history of Tournville.
It's in French?
It is in French. Study up.
And it's filled with wonderful historic pictures. And I won't show you all.
No, no, I just wanted to show.
Well, we also brought gifts, and one of them was a photograph of the U of I quad that was framed nicely and presented to them. This is a photograph created by Larry Camper Studios. And we also gave them a copy of our kind of commemorative 10-year review of the Sister City program in Urbana, which has a large section in the center on Tournville, our visit to Tournville in 2014, and also two pages on their visit to the United States and to visit Urbana. So they were very appreciative of that. Well, the memory of veteran Kermit Harden was on the minds of the people of Tournville. And it was announced during the ceremony that the new development that they are going to be building on the east bank of the Moselle River, right across from the City Hall, it's a new development. One of the streets will bear the name of Mr. Kermit Harden. So Kermit has now, will soon have a street in Tournville named for him. This is the respect that they honored him with. We couldn't get over the strong feelings of respect and admiration they had for pretty much anything American at the moment. So here's a picture of all of the participants, the councilors, the deputy councilors, the deputy mayors, rather, and the children. This is most of what constitutes their public City Council meetings.
And the children in front are actually, they have a children's City Council that are all elected, so the children in front are the ones who have been elected. I think they just went through elections a couple of weeks ago.
How about that? Well, then we had a slight break, and we were all invited to a gala at the Château de la Grange, which was in a town which would be like adjacent to Tournville. This was a chateau that was owned by a Baron, a Dutch, a Duke and a Duchess. They don't use it currently. They have another place that they live in elsewhere, closer to Paris, I believe. And so they allow other people to use it. The City has used it for the evening, and it was incredible. That's the crowd in the main salon, which are lined up to listen to some of the speeches that were made. And of course, you find out that you have to make another. And of course you find out that you have to make another speech and also sing the anthems again.
So, I'm sorry, that's the seventh time we sing it that day.
The, um, okay, so I went, go back to that one for briefly. Um, one, there were two, um, veterans from the United States who attended the celebrations in Tionville that we got to know somewhat. And I never got quite the gentleman's last name, but his first name is Dominic or, or Dan, he called himself. And I think it was from Connecticut, as I remember. And, um, he was, uh, at many of the things and doing many of the, um, received a lot of, um, uh, moments of appreciation. And he, he spoke eloquently also of some of his experiences. And if you might remember Jackie Helfgott, he came here, uh, five years ago. He's their, um, minister or deputy of culture and art.
I think he's public works director.
No, he's culture and art.
Sorry. So, all, you know, all of their deputy mayors are responsible for different departments, which is kind of interesting.
They're, they're answerable to the citizens, uh, about taking care of certain situations in their community and they have these assignments. And these are all appointed because the mayor, when he's elected, brings with him a slate of, um, workers and appointees. So these are not individually elected like we are. So when the mayor gets elected, he brings in a team.
It's like his cabinet?
Yes, it's like his cabinet, if you want to say that.
Basically, he's allowed to bring in the number, the percentage vote that he gets. So if he gets 50%, 50% of his slate comes in.
Yeah, and there is an opposition party and we actually, I stayed on Monday night and I actually attended a city council meeting for an hour and a half and I, I saw the repartee that occurs between the mayor as he was presenting his budget for the first time with the opposition who had a lot to say about his budget, but since I don't know all French, I just assumed that I could feel that there was not an agreement. So then, uh, after the speeches, which you saw more speeches, um, and words and things like that, um, they started again eating because there was hors d'oeuvres everywhere and there was a beautiful band. And the band was playing American music and, um, you know, we listened for a while and after a while people kind of warmed up and people began to dance and it was became truly a party, which the next slide, I think demonstrates.
So Kate and Wendy are in the middle there and then the mayor is the person who's dancing there and then...
Mayor Cuny and his wife Isadora.
Dennis is going to pop up next.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, well, I was dancing. And, um, also to notice, I would say that this is like the ultimate expression of, um, citizen diplomacy working on a global scale. When you look at the mayor and happy, what a happy guy this guy is. Well, the evening ended and, um, the next day we got up again. And there was more, um, military ceremonial things to do. So what'd you want to say?
So, um, this gentleman actually is a friend of General Patton's granddaughter and so he goes around and dresses up like General Patton. Um, so he's leading in the, the army. Um, it's very interesting. A lot of the French in this area have been able to scavenge these vehicles, um, that were left behind by the Americans and they take great pride in rehabilitating them and then showing them in these different parades. So that's the, the beginning of the parade and, um, as you, there's, they have all the uniforms, um, you see little kids dressed up. Uh, it's quite amazing how much thought that they put into this.
Yeah, these are the reenactors and they have many reenactor societies or associations. And as a matter of fact, Brigitte is, uh, oh, uh, in charge of coordinating their activities.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's her job. So there again are the, uh, two, um, veterans being honored. They sat right in front.
I was able to speak with the, the gentleman, um, who does not have the scarf on and his job was to ferry people across the river because there weren't any bridges. Um, so that's what he did was he moved, helped move the troops during the war.
Yeah, yeah. He ran a boat across the river for them before they built a bridge.
And then this is a very, very loud cannon. They in fact came, walked around and told us to close our ears and I wasn't prepared so I still jumped and, and when the cannon went off twice.
Shot it off a couple of times, yeah. It was fun.
Um, and then, do you want to take this one?
Yeah. So, uh, um, then that afternoon, uh, we actually went and, and did a little bit of a thing at one of the plazas, which was, uh, being dedicated to, uh, General Patton. And then after that, our group, we didn't really have that much to do with it, but, um, we were there present and, uh, then we walked down toward the river and there's a park around, along the river called the Park Napoleon. And in this park, they had prepared a tree planting and this is a little pecan tree, I learned, that, um, is being planted in the honor of the city of Urbana. And we thought that was rather impressive. We all got the chance to put a shovel full of dirt at the base of the tree.
And then, um, there was, this is the last night, so there was a swing band concert for all of the people who had arrived, um, for the celebration. So it wasn't just the city of Urbana. We had, there was probably 150 people there, Americans and American family members, um, who were there to celebrate the liberation. Torreville actually was part of Germany during World War II, so it wasn't occupied France. Um, so they were liberated from being part of Germany, which was very interesting. Um, so, so it was a lovely swing band concert, um, in the 40s tradition. And, um, then of course we had an after-party, um, in which, uh, a very, very nice woman invited us over to her place and, um, she cooked us dinner. Uh, this was completely unscripted, so she just threw some food together and gave us some lovely wine and then we had to wake up the next morning and leave, unfortunately.
I would say that, you have to know that this lady was the one who owned the, probably the best restaurant in, in Tionville.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and her partner, and, uh, they invited us up to their rooms. And then she said, "Well, aren't you hungry? Let's just throw something together." And she made a gourmet meal in about 20 minutes. And then, well...
I think we had, uh, different drinks for every single course that, that we went through.
And then there was a legendary bottle.
Then there was a legendary bottle, which I'm not going to pronounce. I don't remember the name of it.
No, I don't.
It was very good, very good. Kate has the bottle.
An extremely expensive wine was opened at our honor.
It's empty. It was a very, very expensive bottle of wine.
We don't know. We're just guessing.
Uh, so, so my mother joined us on this trip and my mother and I actually traveled home right after this, um, but Kate and Wendy traveled to Paris.
Yes.
Um, so you'll see, uh, the, the police department actually drove Wendy and Kate to the train station, um, which is what you see there. They have two police forces plus an army base in their town. Um, so there's the national police, which are primarily in charge of security. Um, and then you have, they're the, they're the ones who are detectives, they're the ones, um, who go investigate thefts and so forth. So it's a bit different than ours. And then they do have police.
Municipal.
Municipal police and, um, they have a lot of cameras in that city, I will just say.
And so Christiane was one of the deputies and that's her job is to manage the, the municipal police force. And, uh, and, um, Brigitte and Christiane were shadowing us and providing us with all kinds of, uh, help and friendship, incredible friendship, um, throughout the whole trip. So, uh, we all dispersed in various directions, um, with extremely, um, kind and thoughtful feelings of appreciation for the people of Tionville. So we know that they're going to be visiting us next year. That's already, uh, been mentioned and hoped and, uh, they discussed quite a bit about wanting to develop, um, levels of exchange between us, maybe cultural and maybe educational. So we're hoping to see what can be evolved. Um, you know, uh, they talked several times about, uh, hoping to have student exchanges, maybe even if it was just three or four students, have the opportunity to go to France and meet them, experience, uh, time in their schools. And, um, and they know that there'd be students who would love to come to America as well. So these are some of the goals that we might try to, um, encourage in the future.
Yeah.
So I'd like to now present the mayor with a few gifts. I'll come forward and so everybody can watch this on the television.
We have that.
We have this too.
I'll start with these.
You are.
So these are from, uh, to you, this is, uh, mayor of the city. Now that's nice. And also this, beautiful book. Well, I didn't shoot out, I'm very careful here. Do you need a box cutter, Dan? I do.
You do have a box cutter?
Oh, my.
I think I should have a pocket knife.
I think we need to get sashes, like the French have.
We'll save this for a very special day.
Okay, so these are also two booklets about, uh, the history of your city, a little bit during the war. And they gave us a portfolio of photographs.
Oh, it is a beautiful.
About 14, 20 of these and these are all historic photographs that were of, some of them are from the previous, uh, trip that we took, but also historic photographs from the war. So this would make a really nice display in our slate games perhaps here in the city.
I think we'll have to have a Tionville room here.
Indeed. And then also, uh, here's a, a modern, a modern book on your city. It's kind of an art book. You have to choose the photographs. So these are the gifts that they sent you.
C'est bien.
There it is.
C'est bon, it's good food.
And, uh, Mary, Mary Alice, would you bring up that other box?
Yes.
Yes. Um, we want you to know also that during our trip, uh, the newspaper carried, uh, information about our, our events and, um, for example, this copy has, uh, pictures of, uh, the previous day's parades and events. There's one I think that Kate brought on, uh, this morning, which is the ones I got on Wednesday after everybody was leaving. So that'll come for the record. And, um, I brought then, of course, for our mayor to sign and to return, we have four copies here of the actual documents that were signed in Tionville. So there's four copies of it. There's a, a place for your signature, I think, kind of up here. And, um, yeah, that's a really excellent idea, actually. So they'd like to have, uh, two of them returned and, uh, they would expect then, when they visit us next year, to have a signing official of, uh, of the, of a ceremonial signing of the two that we have in our position.
One thing that, I just wanted to say, they also gave us a tour of all of their offices. So we went to Public Works. Um, we went to greenhouses. The city owns giant greenhouses, um, and there's flowers everywhere, um, which is just beautiful. Diane, I bet you would have enjoyed the greenhouses. Um, but what was most interesting to me was a cultural center that they had just built and they call it the puzzle. And the puzzle is a combination of library, um, and video and digital creativity. And so they have rooms for podcasts, they have rooms for VR, they have photography rooms. Um, it's a beautiful, uh, building and concept and it seems to be highly utilized when it, over there, so.
Yeah, um, it's, it's also very kind of organically create, uh, they have like pods and they have caverns for people to study and they have, um, niches. They have, uh, complete, um, video equipment for creativity. And, um, I did give them a copy of our Sister Cities, uh, 10-year commemorative booklet for their collection.
Thank you.
On Monday.
Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you.
And I, and I would like to thank the delegation from the city for representing our city so beautifully. And I wish I could have been with you. We were interviewing our public works directors candidates while you were in France, so.
The timing was not perfect, but, um, and they missed you, I would say, but nonetheless.
We're looking forward to their visit next summer. I know it was a challenging and difficult, um, mission, but you served us well.
All right, well, I have, uh, that'll end our presentations and I have two public input cards, uh, one from Bishop King James Underwood, who, uh, does not wish to, uh, address the council, but would like it entered into the record that he has continued concerns about the sewer problems in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. And one from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, uh, who also does not wish to address the council, uh, but wishes that her position be entered into the record that she is also continually concerned about, uh, the Dr. Ellis, Ellis subdivisions sewer problems. Okay, Stanford Port, I think we've got one business and development.
I'm, I'm Steph McMahon. I'm not sure I've met all of you. I'm the new economic development coordinator here for the city or the new Libby, as people are getting to know me. And I left a packet for you of our business and development report for November, um, on each of your seats. And just wanted to go over a couple of, um, highlights for you. Um, the first one is that the business grant expansion on Philo Road is happening. Um, that is in line with the city's, um, city and mayor's priority number six to make Southeast Urbana an economic priority. So we have updated all of our, um, pamphlets and information to include the Philo Road and have updated all of that to the, the city's website. So all of that is currently available. We've drafted a, um, press release that's set to go out tomorrow, so the media will blast that out to let businesses on Philo Road and the whole community know that these grants are now available to them. And we are doing a targeted campaign to, um, touch base with area developers and new businesses that were, um, getting leads through building permits and touching base with them to make sure they have information in these, on these grants in their hands. So we're hopeful, um, that this initiative that you all approved will lead to some new business development along the Philo Road District. Um, the three larger projects at the bottom are all three major projects that are in the work for spring. And, um, the next steps for all of those are in the hands of the developers at this point. On the next page, um, just a little update about downtown Urbana. Uh, this is my fifth week here and since I started, we've had two ribbon cuttings, one at Stango Cuisine, which has expanded into a new full-service restaurant at Lincoln Square Mall. They had started as a, uh, station in the food court previously. So we had a ribbon cutting there. Also, the Analog Wine Library hosted a ribbon cutting, which was, uh, a very nice event, great wine, really nice networking space, and they also have some private room in the back. So if you haven't been there, I recommend checking it out. And then also wanted to let you know, if you hadn't heard, Bohemia has, um, pretty much doubled its space in downtown Urbana. The owner, Malia Hayes' brother, Doug Beck, is building furniture. So Malia has added home, um, display and decor furniture into her line of products and has a beautiful space in the back of the store. And she will be, um, scheduling a ribbon cutting soon, so we'll be sure to let you all know when that happens. A couple of, um, listed a few upcoming events that are happening in the next month for y'all. The first one that is the German Christmas market at Riggs Brewery. And I found out a little tidbit tonight that the wooden stalls at the market were designed by Norden, the German design studio and one of the original tenants from, that is at Colab. So, um, the city's Christmas party is going to be there this week, so we'll all get it, I'll get to check that out for the first time. And if you haven't been, um, I invite you to check that out also. Another one you may want to consider, which would be a great networking event, um, with Urbana businesses, is the Urbana Business Association meeting on December 9. businesses, is the Urbana Business Association meeting on December 19th, which is going to be at the Urbana Country Club. But all of these are great events that, if you have the time during this busy season, you might want to check out. On the development side, there are several updates there, but one that has changed a little bit is the Best of Africa grocery store is moving forward with its second expansion. So, we are working with them on that at this time. And then, a couple of charts and statistics on the last few pages. The total square footage for all new construction, which is, includes commercial and multi-family, has, actually was above average except for a large development that happened last October that added almost 246,000 square feet. So, if it hadn't been for that, which I'm not saying that was a bad thing, but our square footage would have been above average this year in that regard. On the single-family construction, the square footage is down. It's at a three-year all-time low, and that's something we'll be looking at in more in-depth as we work on the annual report for y'all that'll be coming in January. Finally, the last chart that is on this report is the year-to-date home sales through October was also down compared to 2017 and 18, slightly up for the month of October, but down overall for the year. So, we'll be looking at all of that in depth as we move forward. So, it's just a little update for y'all. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Stephanie? Mary Ellis.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I know that you're new, but I'm, I did not look this up, and I'm wondering if you know the number. So, right now, the Gather is estimated at about $30 million, the project. Is that the target when that project was approved? I don't remember how much that was supposed to be, and as I said, I realize you're new.
Right. I don't have that information. I don't know if you'd like, Mr. Boyce, to come up and answer that, or we can get that information for you.
Well, if Brandon knows, then yes.
I think it's pretty consistent with the estimates we've been hearing all along, but this agreement, the city did not enter into a development agreement, and I don't believe any of the zoning or related approvals would have, you know, required a certain amount of money. The scale of the project is certainly consistent with what was originally envisioned.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Other questions? I had a couple myself. Stephanie, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I know I might have been part of the impetus for this report because I asked for it a few weeks ago. Could we get any more detail about the Landmark Hotel, other than it's in the developer's hands?
Our understanding is that the developer has until January 31st to close on the property, unless there is another extension of the purchase agreement, which could occur. We're optimistic that they'll close yet this winter, and we'll be ready to move forward in the spring. But as Steph said, it is in the developer's hands at this moment.
We haven't heard anything from them as far as concerns about moving forward with the project?
No concerns, and the kinds of questions we would expect a developer to be asking as they prepare to move forward on a project.
Okay. And then, what is the expansion of the African store? Are they expanding their grocery store or to add more space?
Yeah, they're expanding that into add, add more space to the, closer to the 25 o'clock into that area, but they'll still have quite a bit of space in the back that's left open. So, I believe they're going to be almost doubling their square, good, square footage.
And it's going to be grocery-related?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah. This is on the south face of the building, and Mike Hojer, the property owner, also commissioned an expansion of the Glenn Davies mural there, which is kind of an African savanna and a village and a marketplace, I believe. And the, the space they're expanding into had previously been leased by 25 o'clock, who initially had plans for a larger expansion. So, they're going to focus on the space that they're active in and the unfinished restaurant area. And what this also does is it lays the groundwork for Best of Africa's intended expansion into an event facility, which would be the next phase they would pursue after they not only complete the construction project, but operationally open the expanded store.
Gotcha. Cool. That's awesome. And then, lastly, Gather, again, in the developer's hands, could we get any more detail on where they're at?
Well, the first thing we would expect to see happen upon close, which we expect to be any day within weeks, again, a lot goes into these, but council actually made a, an approval last week that was an important final step towards that. But what you'll see is if the, if the buildings start coming down or we get a building permit application, we'll know that they closed.
Okay. Great.
For a demo, yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. First up, we've got a couple of resolutions, one ordinance, and a approval of our meeting schedule for next year, and then a discussion of a meeting date at the end of this year before Christmas. All right. First up is resolution number 2019-12-054R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Danville, Illinois for the purchase of asphalt emulsion. Public Works?
Thank you. This is pretty straightforward intergovernmental agreement that will allow us to purchase asphalt emulsion during the winter months when our normal source is not manufacturing it, from the city of Danville, who has adequate capacity to sell it to us. And this will allow us to continue operating our spray patcher through the winter months and continue filling those potholes as they pop up. So, I would ask approval of the resolution.
Thanks. Is there a motion for this resolution, or any questions for you? Mary Ellis?
I have two questions. My first question is, is this the first time in the winter that we've been able to fill potholes, or?
Yes.
Okay. And so, is my math correct that it's $2,200, which is expected?
Well, we're not necessarily going to purchase 800 gallons. It's up to 800.
I know, but the max.
Okay, well, now I'm going to have to get.
Well, you don't, you don't have to. I just wanted to kind of confirm that it was $2,200, and this is a new thing that, so this is an expansion of a service that we currently do.
Yeah, $2,200.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Bill?
So, do they have to drive the spray patcher to Danville to fill it up there?
I don't think they have to drive the spray patcher, but we have to go collect the material. But I don't think we do it.
Barrels or something?
Something like that.
Do you know how, like, once a month will we have to go there? Once a week?
I can find out. I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll have another chance to talk about it at the council meeting, so I'll have those answers for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Sharice?
Yeah, my question was, is it going to be stored there or stored here? Do we have to drive there when we need it? And how much do we get? How do we determine how much we need? That kind of thing.
I didn't expect this level of interest in asphalt emulsion, so I'm not prepared to answer that, but I will get the answers and provide it.
Okey-dokey.
Dennis?
And so, this sounds like maybe a more useful and better technology for patching. Does that mean that whatever machinery we use for the hot and cold patching, are we still going to keep that, and are we going to use it also for various things, or are we, are we retiring some old machinery? What's the story?
No, this was, this was a new machine, this spray hole patch, the spray patcher. And so, we'll continue to do some of the more manual patching, but this is a way of a single person going out and, and doing very effective patching all day long.
Is it patching for smaller kinds of holes? I mean, is it more like servicing cracked pavements and things, or is this like a pothole solution?
It's potholes.
It's a pothole solution. Okay.
Any other questions? Mary Ellis?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd take that.
All right.
Oh, wait, hold on. Charlie's flagging me down.
You know, the four items here are all pretty boilerplate. Three of them are related. You could easily do, send all four of these to a consent agenda next week.
Thanks, Charlie. Mary Ellis is trying to rack her brain about how to make that motion.
No, no, no. I'm just thinking of one of these items that I don't know if it should go on there, but that's okay. So, I'll move the resolution number 2019-12-054R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Danville, Illinois for purchase of asphalt emulsion, be moved forward to city council in an omnibus bill with the recommend, put.
In consent agenda.
In the consent agenda.
There you go.
With a recommendation for approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll second it, please.
All right. That's been moved by Mary Ellis, seconded by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right. Next up, we have ordinance number 2019-12-071, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Sections 2, 25, and 2, 28. Clerk, do you want to give us a rundown on what those are once more?
Yeah. Thanks to our legal staff. We just simply have to put in the code, the switch from Tuesday, from Monday, from the first and third to the second and fourth Mondays. And while we're at it, we also corrected the little missing language that, that should a committee meeting fall on a legal holiday, it gets bumped to Tuesday.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mary Ellis?
I'll make a motion that we move ordinance number 2019-12-071, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Section 2 hyphen 25 and 2 hyphen 28 to the consent agenda with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sharice has got it.
Got it.
Any discussion amongst council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, that motion passes. Next up, we have resolution number 2019-12-055R, a resolution amending city council rules and committee of the whole rules. Mr. Clerk, do you want to give us one more reminder on our choices here?
This is some, this is dropping the resolution on resolutions, rule number four, as, as we no longer need it, and it cleans up some other language. And it makes, it generalizes our committee of the whole to any committee of the council would follow the same set of rules.
I'd just like to state for the public record that Dean Hazen is very sad that we're going to be getting rid of the resolution on resolutions. Mary Ellis?
So, I, I'm just curious, getting rid of the resolution on resolutions, so can you just go over for us and also the audience exactly when we use a resolution on resolutions and why it is obsolete?
Okay. It came, I did a little history checking with Jack Waller, former city attorney, and it came about in the 80s when there was a constant influx of public demanding resolutions be passed on X, Y, and Z. A lot of it was anti-war protests and so on. This was before there were the Open Meeting Act regulations on public meetings and regulate, and the time limits and so on. So, they were finding themselves not able to get any business done, so they, they created this rule so that resolutions had to go to committee first. So, we no longer need that because we have the Open Meetings Act define public input process and all that, and, and so, resolutions as they appear tend, and, and, and resolutions have to be placed in the agenda for action anyway on it, on the, you know, with a 48-hour notice. So, that's the other piece of the Open Meetings Act that didn't exist when this was created. So, so it really, it's no longer relevant. And we've been, we've been, we've had resolutions that we've had to act on, which we, you know, properly publish as the, as agenda items with the relevant material prior to meetings that wasn't, that wasn't required in days past. Since that is required now, we have plenty of time for the public to, to act and for you to read on most resolutions. Most of the time, we will simply, you know, use the usual process of going to committee first, but occasionally, you know, we have resolutions, we have ordinances. We don't have to do that for ordinances. We don't suspend rules to consider an ordinance, but we suspend the rules to consider this res, a resolution that has typically less weight except for money time, except for money issues than, than ordinances.
So, typically with the committee of the whole agenda, we always see the resolutions and the ordinances on there before they go to city council for final approval. Right now, it's only occasionally when Dean gets annoyed and we have to suspend the resolution on resolutions. I, I say this because the default right now is that everything comes to committee before going to city council.
Right, yes.
So, is the default changing?
No, the default is not changing. This is simply, just gets rid of that rule that lets us just introduce new business as necessary. Like I said, we, we regularly introduce ordinances under new business as needed, and we, we have to go through this extra step on resolutions that we just don't need because of the newer rules in place via the Open Meetings Act and Public Input Act.
Okay. Any other questions for the clerk? All right, is there a motion?
Okay, I'll do that. I'll move resolution number 2019-12-055R, a resolution amending city council rules and committee of the whole rules forward to the consent agenda for approval.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion amongst the committee? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same as aye. All right. And that motion passes, and we'll go forward with the seat on the consent agenda next week. All right. Our last voting item is the approval of the 2020 city council and committee of the whole annual meeting schedule. Mr. Clerk?
So, basically, we will provide a schedule indicating council and committee of the whole rules, committee of the whole meetings on the second and fourth Mondays, first and third Mondays, in that calendar that, that you're attached here for your approval next week. So, I just ask that you send that, the, that calendar forward with a recommendation for approval, and a start, and the usual start time of 7:00 PM.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move we send the revised calendar, which we shall see in time for next meeting, to the entire council with a recommendation for approval.
Would you like that to be added to the consent agenda? Eric?
And I would most appreciate for this to be included in the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Sharice has got the second. Moved by Eric. All right. Any discussion amongst the committee? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, that motion passes, and our last item tonight will be discussion of the December 23rd committee of the whole meeting.
This is informational. At the moment, there are no agenda items for next week, and.
Two weeks?
You mean the 23rd?
I'm sorry, the 23rd. Yeah.
So, there's no meeting next week?
Yeah, there is a meeting next week. Yes, sorry. There, there are no agenda items at, at present time for the 23rd, so I'm just giving you a heads up. Per council rules, the mayor will be able to, to, the mayor or the chair, which would be, Mary Ellis, would be able to, to cancel that meeting if there are no agenda items.
So, I have the power?
Basically, yeah. The rules say, yeah, yeah.
All right. I will not be here personally, so I'm not going to miss it one way or the other. But we don't need to, do we need a vote or anything? Just discussion, right?
No, the mayor and, or the chair can, can send out that message. Once we, once we determine that there really are no agenda items.
Okay. All right. Any other items? All right, then we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.